All right. Good afternoon. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for coming out there in the Bodare. Call this meeting of the Tourist Development Council to order. We'll start with an invocation and a pledge. Mr. Hartley?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for our blessings. Lord Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day. Lord Heavenly Father, we ask you to go with us and give us wisdom to serve and make decisions for the people. Lord Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless our county, bless our state, and bless our country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Show me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Got a couple of new business items. The first one's a funding request. Beat the Heat Bulls and Barrels. Ms. Phillips, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Very well. You want to give us a lowdown?
Sir?
You want to give us a lowdown?
Yes, sir. We're back again for our annual Beat the Heat Bulls and Barrels in McLennan. We've been very successful doing these events in the springtime and in the fall. So this one here is for us to advertising dollars to get everybody we can over here.
I looked it over. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
What percent of people come from out of town?
A good forty to fifty percent or better. Contestant-wise, or?
Both.
Both. It'll be over half out of town or better. Because we co-sanction with a big, well, actually, the Lead Bull Riders Association. Those guys are going to be anywhere from Virginia, down the coast, Mississippi, Alabama, so we pull everybody. Of course, they all spend the night and eat and everything else here. Lot of out-of-towners.
Looks like your total request is $3,000?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion. It'll be accepted.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Langford, second one from Mr. Norton, to approve the funding request. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign. Motion carried.
Thank y'all. And did we ever get a new logo, or are we staying with the old logo? Okay. I'll get it put out. Thank y'all.
Coordinate with Sarah to get your check.
Oh, we know how to do that.
All right. Thank you.
We got that taken care of.
All right. Now, for the part we've been waiting for, for years.
Yeah. Y'all was wondering how you were going to describe that.
Literally, literally, for years. We have Mr. John Wisnig with North Star, who we finally got a contract signed to be, help us with this strategic plan.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate having the opportunity to be here this afternoon. First of all, I apologize for the cane. I had some knee surgery not too long ago, and it's doing better, but you don't want me falling over.
No, no, sir.
In fact, it took me a minute to figure out how I was going to do the pledge allegiance, but I think it did out. You know, we got it worked. But we're excited to be here. We're excited to be working with you guys. Just to give you a little bit of my background, I've been in the tourism industry for forty-plus years now. I actually started working at the Opryland Theme Park when I was in college, catching Skyride cars. That's what got me involved in tourism. After college, I went to work for the Tennessee Department of Tourist Development and did their group marketing and their international marketing for a number of years. I actually left the tourism industry for a while when I served as the associate pastor for a large Southern Baptist church in Nashville. I tell people I've always been in destination marketing. I just marketed different destinations for a while. Came back into the industry, and I've managed convention and visitor's bureaus. I served as the executive director of the Tennessee Tourism Roundtable, which was the statewide association of convention and visitor's bureaus, chambers, attractions, restaurants, hoteliers. We were both an educational and lobbying group. And then, most recently, was the director of tourism for the Tennessee Hospitality and Tourism Association. So I've been around a while. My boss at North Star says, "Don't go through all that because they think you're old." Well, I am. So, you know, that's okay.
Yeah, we resemble that.
Yeah.
Exactly. I understand. We're excited about the North Star project. I've had the pleasure of doing this type of strategic plan for communities all across the country. And to be honest with you, I prefer working with smaller rural communities. I really do. It's just a, this is probably being broadcast, and people are nicer here than they are in some of the communities I've had an opportunity to work in. I've spent the last day and a half doing my secret shopping. I've had the pleasure of staying at the Hampton, and I've already complimented them on an A-plus staff. That's just, that's what, that's the name of the game in the hospitality industry, is how the staff reacts to their guests, and they do an exceptional job. One of the housekeepers, I finally had to say, "No, I really am fine. I'm good," you know? So, pardon me. North Star has done, as I said, this strategic planning for a lot of communities. And we go through a process. My secret shopping yesterday and today, I actually came in as a tourist. Nobody knew I was here. Nobody knew who I was. I visited all your attractions. I pulled information from the internet about what I should see while I was here, just as a visitor would. I saw a lot of, ecotourism is the name of the game here, I believe. I told somebody yesterday that, I think you've got a real niche there with ecotourism. I learned how important it was to be bear aware. You know, when I went into the park, I saw that sign several times, and so I decided to view the park from the safety of my car. Beautiful facilities, the national park, the national forest, recreation areas, the city itself in McLennan, Glen St. Mary, Glen St. Mary, yes, okay, thank you. Lot of rural areas. And you've got a lot of unique things here. So I think, I think the issue is not necessarily, do you have product? It's going to be, how do we, how do we get others to know about that product and to come and stay here? You have a growing inventory of hospitality that I think is improved from perhaps some of the latter offerings, earlier offerings you had. So you have a growth, I think, in that area that's excellent. The procedure that we're going to be going through is, and Sarah and I have had a couple of conversations, and I think Sarah's going to be our point person. When we have questions, we'll go straight to Sarah, and she can give the information back to us. We'll begin the process of gathering the research data first. This is part of that process. The secret shopping is part of that process. And having conversations with folks on you. Strategic, the two greatest dangers of a strategic plan are, it's all directed by the writer, as opposed to the people who are going to have to implement it. And the second greatest danger is, what a nice plan, let's put it on the shelf. So we hope to advise a plan that you will adopt that will be right for Baker County and that will meet your needs and your goals. And that's part of the process we'll be going through over the next couple of months, is finding out exactly what your goals are, what you want to see tourism be in Baker County, and how you want to get there. Part of the research process, as we spoke with Sarah about, will be gathering two pretty important studies, or three studies. One's a situation analysis that, and I saw that Roberto, when he sent you that information, he's really, Roberto Munoz is our vice president of research. He knows things I'll never understand. But he's really, really good at taking that data and making it very understandable for folks, for complete meaning. He'll do those, the situation analysis. I imagine most of your members of this committee will be participating in that. Where we get your opinion on where is tourism right now in the county, and what do you perceive as being your greatest strengths? What are your greatest weaknesses? What do you see as opportunities and threats and so on? We'll look a lot into the budget. We'll look into how that is allocated, used, how it could be used in the future. The second study we'll do is a CAP study, Consumer Awareness and Perception. And working with this group, working with council, or the commission, commission, right? Okay. Working with the commission, and through Sarah, you'll select some places that you want to, us to do the research in. As we were talking Monday, we think probably Jacksonville, Deval County's going to be one of them, because that's a great source of visitation, could be a great source of visitation for you. But you'll pick, I think, three different communities. And we'll actually go in and do a consumer awareness. We ask people, "Do you know where Baker County is? Do you know what Baker County has? Have you ever been to Baker County? What do you think there is to do in Baker County?" It helps us kind of know the lay of the land of people who could be potential visitors for you. This, the other study we will do is called a tapestry study, and we utilize zip codes, primarily from the hoteliers. And we'll talk about that, because I know that's sometimes a hard thing to, for hoteliers to provide, for two reasons. Number one, most systems don't necessarily, all we need are zip codes. We don't need names. We don't want addresses. We need none of that. We just need zip codes of origin. And quite often, those are hard to produce, oddly enough, out of a database for some hoteliers. It depends on the, depends on the flag, and depends on their systems. But the second thing is, quite often hotels are understandably concerned about that information staying. It's very proprietary information. And so we, we never share any of that information with anybody. It's all reported in the aggregate, and it allows, it allows us to actually go in and see where your current visitors are coming from. Not only that, we learn a little bit from their zip code about them. We learn the demographics of your visitor. What is their, what kind of, what kind of travel do they usually take? What is their income level? What is, you know, it really gives us a good idea of the kind of people who are currently visiting Baker County. So we'll do all of that. We'll crunch all those numbers. The second part of the project I'll be coming back for, and we'll work that out with Sarah and you guys, on when would be the appropriate time to do that. And we hold a series of stakeholder meetings. The first would be with you as the commission. And it's about an hour and a half, two hour at the most session. And we really get into the weeds. We really talk to you one-on-one about, or as a group, about tourism in Baker County. Where do you perceive things being? Where do you, what are your greatest strengths and weaknesses? It really helps us to, as I said, develop that report, that recommendation that is based on what you want it to be. We're very aware that it's important for a strategic plan for tourism in particular to be something that is right for Baker County, that does not in any way negatively affect the quality of life for the people who live here. I'm from Nashville. There's a term that's used a lot in our industry right now, it's called overtourism. I live in overtourism.
Yes, you do.
Nashville is overtourism. And if anybody in Nashville is watching this, I'm sorry. You can, you can kill the goose that laid the golden egg sometimes by overdoing. My wife and I happen to attend First Baptist Church in downtown Nashville, very old, traditional church. And, you know, you come out all inspired and just, you know, it's wonderful, and we have an old carol on that, you know, the bells are ringing as you're leaving the church. So you're just really inspired and all kind of feeling good. All of a sudden, here comes the beer cart with what we call the woo-hoo girls, you know, who are just going crazy going up and down the street. So it's, it can affect the quality of life. And Nashville's aware of that. They're trying to put some restrictions in place. But we would never want to put a plan together that took you to a place you didn't want to go. So we then come back after all those stakeholder meetings, and Sarah and you as a group will help us determine who we need to talk to. We want to talk to as many hoteliers as we can, because they are most directly affected quite often by tourism. We want to talk to government leadership. We want to talk to the county commissioners. We want to talk to the city board of aldermen, the mayors. We want to get that, we all know that nothing will happen without the political buy-in. So we want to make sure that we involve them. We would want people who are involved in arts and culture in the community, historical attractions, and quite frankly, business people. And people who have, as you guys all know, a dollar, a tourism dollar spent in a community doesn't stay in one place. It gets turned over several times in a community. So it's important that we talk to business people who can benefit from tourism growth as well. We want to talk to citizens. We would want to have people who are interested as citizens, that they're interested in the growth of the community, they're interested in tourism. And we always ask that we get both what we call champions and critics. You need both. You need input from both. I was, before I left, the first commission visitor bureau I was at, to go to the Tennessee Tourism Roundtable, we needed to change our structure completely. We were underfunded. We were, we were in a bad organizational structure. So we put together a task force, and that task force met for about six months. And it was really interesting, because in about the second month, I turned to my chair, who was sitting right next to me, and I said, "Listen to their pronouns." And she said, "What do you mean?" I said, "They're no longer saying me, they're saying us." So, and those, those critics quite often become your greatest champions when they understand what the situation is and have a right to put their two cents into it. We'll then go back and taking all those stakeholder meetings, the research, we'll put together a draft of the plan. And I'll come, either come back, resume with you guys as a commission, and we'll go over the draft together to make sure we're all comfortable with it, that we're on target with what you want. From there, we'll then put together the final report, which I will come back and be glad to present to the commission. Sarah and I were talking about this earlier, and it certainly would be at your leadership. You know, I don't, I don't mind at all presenting to a county commission, but I think it has more input coming from letting, letting us as a group make that presentation. I think it means more coming from you, because you know the players, you know the individuals. I'm the guy from Nashville who doesn't carry as much weight with the political leadership of the community. So it's important to, I always, I always relate myself as a revival preacher. I can come in and give you hellfire and brimstone, then I get to go home. So you're the ones who would live with it and stay with it and would have the most input into helping implement that plan. Then I'm around for, I always tell the communities I work with, I may not be under contract anymore, but my phone still works. And that would be my commitment to you as a commission, to Sarah as well, that as, as you implement the plan, you're going to have questions, you're going to have, you know, things that you want to clarify or whatever, and I'm always available. So that's, that's outside the contract. That's just the way I'm going to do it. So I'm glad to answer any questions you might have. Typically, this is, this is the first time I've had a, I was going to say suit and tie on, but I don't even do that anymore. The last three or four days, I've been in tennis shoes and jeans and so, which was the best way to tour Baker County. I looked very touristy. So, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
You talk about Nashville.
Yes, sir.
I was just, not just past Christmas, but Christmas passed, I was up there. And I understand what you're saying. I've never been there. I'm not really a country music fan, to be quite honest with you. But I went up there as a tourist, obviously. And, but Nashville took that one little thing that they had.
Yep.
And built everything around it.
Yep, exactly.
And we have to find our one little thing.
Yes, exactly.
And, well, that's where we need help.
Right.
We need help trying to find that one little thing.
Exactly.
And magnify it to where it's something that will bring people in, you know?
You're, you're going to be looking for, and this is not really a branding exercise, but I think the tourism plan will help you determine a brand. And you do need a brand. I mean, you've obviously got a, you've got a motto as a county, but for tourists, I really don't care that you're preparing, preparing for your future or preserving your past. As a visitor, that doesn't matter to me. When I, when I ran a CVB, Convention and Visitor Bureau, and we'd have marketing meetings, the first thing I would do is go up to the flip chart and draw a great big I on that flip chart. And I'd tell my staff, for the next hour, we're only going to look at things the way a visitor looks at them. We can't, we know what's here. We know what, what attracts us, but that doesn't matter. We can know that all day long. What matters is, what does the visitor think of Baker County? And what would draw them here as opposed to going somewhere else? So we did a similar exercise for Clay County on the other side of Jacksonville, if you're familiar with that area. And one of the things that, that we found in Clay County that really set them apart was they were a taste of old Florida. Not, not in the urban area, urban areas of Clay County. But you get back into the country, and the trees with the moss hanging over it, and the community's right on the river. It was like going back to what you thought Florida might have been a hundred years ago. And this is first blush. Don't hold me to this at all, because we've got a lot of work yet to do. But the concept of ecotourism, I think, is your, is your niche in many ways. You've got more of it here, and you have more opportunity for recreation, for ecotourism here than a lot of places I've ever seen. So is, how do you, how do you preserve that and at the same time, I don't want to say take advantage of it, but utilize it for what you want to do? But again, that's my first blush. I don't, I don't know yet.
Would you say Shoals Park would be the?
Sorry?
Would Shoals Park would be our?
It can be. And I'm, I'm just, I'm prepping, I haven't written my secret shopper's report yet, so this is coming right off the top of my head. I had a hard time finding it. I had a hard time knowing what to do when I got there. So, you know, that'll come out in the report. Again, as a visitor, I actually went to two or three different entrances before I found one that was open. And then I thought it was just dirt road. This can't be the right one. And it was. So, you know, so some signage would help, and a guide, once I got into the park, to know where to go, what I was going to see, how to get there, and so on. You have some real opportunity, I think. Of course, I didn't get to see it, but from what I've been able to research and see, and what I saw from a distance at the park, at Shoals Park, your ATB, you've got a lot, that's a pretty strong asset. That's going to bring people in. And I'm not sure what event y'all were talking about, of the bull and barrels or whatever it was. You have to find those events that not only meet the needs of the community, that are fun and interesting and great for the community, but what's really important to you? That they come spend the night? You know, that's, that you want to find those things that are actually going to draw people in and have them spend the night. And when they spend the night, how do you get them to stay longer? Because that's the, that's the strongest revenue stream you have, is the lodging and the lodging taxes that you collect. So we, we try to always show an ROI on tourism, because tourism is business. Tourism is just as much business as, you know, manufacturing and planning. In fact, it's better, because you don't have to build schools for their children, you don't have to build sewers to their, you know, their facility or whatever. And we call them temporary taxpayers. They come in, enjoy your hospitality, give you some money, pay your taxes, and go home. And that's a wonderful thing. You want to increase those, those number of people that do that. So sometimes that's, that's an important thing to, particularly when you're dealing with, with government leadership, both on the county and city level, and that is showing that ROI. If, if you're giving us this much money to promote and develop tourism, here's what you're going to get back. For years, the state of Tennessee used a nineteen-to-one formula, which is insane. There's no way you can possibly defend that. We use three-to-one principle. For every tax dollar you give me, I'm going to be able to return three to you, and that's a pretty good investment. We also try to help people, and the strategic plan will show this as well, that you can't expect it to turn on a dime. It's just not going to happen. It's like turning a cruise ship. They don't, they don't make right turns, they make arches. And once you get your strategic plan in place, it'll take you some time to get it implemented, to get it happening. But we, when I, when I ran a CVB, I always used the test me, try me, prove me scriptural methodology. And that was, give me the money, let me use it the way I've said I'm going to use it. And if I haven't produced what I say I'm going to produce, then take it back from you. And I think if you approach the expenditure of your, and they are public dollars. It's, if you, if you utilize that method and say, you know, yes, you're giving me this, I'm going to give the city back this, and, or the county back this. Is there only, is just a county lodging taxes, is that correct? Or is there a city lodging taxes?
Just county.
Okay, all right. So I think, you know, there's a lot of, there's, I'm excited. I always get excited about working with the community, especially ones putting together their first strategic plan. Sarah was telling me some things about, or telling us earlier in our Zoom call, about you have a strategic plan for the fairgrounds, which she's going to send us copies of that so we can look at that. I did go out there and saw that there's some potential there. I also saw the Forty Acres, just sitting there waiting for somebody to get it. If you can ever get anybody to respond. I don't know about y'all, but if I owned forty acres of land and somebody wanted to buy it, I'd be going, "Hello." Get me talking. But that doesn't always work. But yeah, it, putting together the plan will be a cooperative effort. You'll get, I'll be honest with you at all times, you know, if I think something's a good idea, I'll tell you. And if I think something's not that great an idea, I'll tell you. But in the end, it's your plan, and you will always override, you know, that. So it gives you, as a commission, not only, and as a community, not only a path forward, these are the steps we're going to take to get to where we want to get. It also gives you the opportunity to say no. If it's not in, if it's not in the best interest of what we have adopted as a plan, then no, we're not going to do that. We're going to, we're going to concentrate on this one thing we do. So anyway, let me answer any questions you might have, or comments, or.
Brice?
By the way, my, I tore my meniscus at Disney World with one of my grandchildren and his family. And so I had to use one of those little electric carts. That's the way to do Disney.
No doubt about that.
I told my wife, if we go back, if mine is a hundred percent, I don't care. It was great.
Good idea.
Yeah. I think you hit the nail on the head. I think ecotourism's going to be a big deal for us.
Yes, sir.
But there's some other things that we've talked about.
Yes, sir.
And be interesting to see how it plays out and how, how we move forward. I'm glad you recognize that this is really the first real plan to bring tourists to Baker County, you know? So that's, that, that's going to be fun, going to be interesting, and we want to make a great impact on our community.
Yes, sir. Well, and to reemphasize, that's, that's why it's going to be important for us to go through that stakeholder, those conversations, so that you can tell me, here's some things we've already talked about, things that we want to see happen. That needs to be reflected in the plan.
What does that timeline look like?
Six months, I believe, is what we've got lined up for this. It'll take us about, it'll take us a couple of months to get all the research put together based on getting, quite frankly, getting the information back that we need from like zip codes, those types of things. And setting up the CAP studies. And y'all deciding where you want those studies to be made, Jacksonville, we talked Tallahassee, we talked a lot of different places, even Southern Georgia perhaps. So it takes us about three months to get all the research part put together. From that, I'll be working on part of the plan. Once we do the stakeholder meetings, I think we'll probably do the stakeholder meetings within probably a month, two months from now, because that's critical. within probably a month, two months from now, because that's critical to go forward. And from that, it takes about a month or so to actually develop that draft. We'll put the draft together, we'll come back, we'll discuss it as a group and make those changes. So our goal is to have it to you by June, July, I'm sorry, July.
Yeah, I think it was July, yeah.
I think there's an opportunity to piggyback a little bit on some of the big tourism places near us.
Yes.
Like Amelia Island. You spend a lot of money to bring tourists down.
Absolutely.
If we can get those folks that are on Amelia Island to take a day trip, just come out here for the day. Next time they plan a trip to Florida, they'll think about staying here. There's a lot of interest in the ecotourism for a day trip from Amelia or St. John's County, St. Augustine, wherever they may be.
Exactly.
I think that we, if we can figure out how to get their attention, they'll come back.
The CBV that I was with, we were actually a suburb of Nashville. If you're familiar with Franklin, Tennessee, just outside the city of Nashville. Of course, it's a very large, large community now, but it also has a huge Civil War history presence. It has a really charming historic downtown, very historic. And the way we positioned ourselves, I mean, we literally were 10 miles from downtown Nashville. And our tagline for a number of years was, we're 100 years and a few short miles from Nashville. Because I have absolutely no problem, if you want to go to the Grand Ole Opry, if you want to go to the Country Music Hall of Fame, more power to you. Just stay in my hotels, eat in my restaurants, shop in my shops, and visit my attractions while you're here. So I think you're exactly right. There's a lot of potential. I don't know what Jacksonville's tourism budget is, I'll find out, but we'll look at some of your competitive set, and I'm sure they all have million-dollar budgets to get people here. Well, why not play off of their million-dollar budgets and capture some of those people as well?
I would guess, and I don't think I've even ever asked Sandy, but I would guess that the hotels here are probably full for Jaguar games.
We get a lot of people, yes.
People learn quickly that they can stay out here and still go to that Jaguar game.
We get a lot of, the games at Gainesville, we get a lot of overflow.
And say, Lake City is booming on home gator game weekends. I mean, it's booming.
Because they don't want to pay the price.
Everybody comes right down to 75 to get to Gainesville, and they stop in Lake City, 30 minutes away.
Yeah. Well, and a lot of that, quite frankly, you can demonstrate great benefit too as well. Yeah, you know, maybe you're going to do business in Jacksonville, but guess what? We're 30 minutes away and our rates are half of what you're going to pay Jacksonville. Sorry, Jacksonville. But that rate can really make a difference, especially once people come here and stay. You know, when they come here for the first time and stay in a really nice property like we're doing, they go, why not? Why wouldn't I do this?
We also have, you know, Lusty Battlefield.
Yes, sir.
And we, and that is on the western side of Baker County. And Columbia County, in my opinion, they've kind of captured it from us, but it's ours.
Yes, sir.
But we need to try to figure out how to get that back.
Yes.
And get that tourism people back.
Am I correct or incorrect? And it was, y'all didn't have that many Civil War battles actually in the state of Florida, is that correct? So it's kind of unique in that. I mean, Tennessee, you can't turn a spin.
There's our history guy down there.
So it does make a unique thing. I was there yesterday and.
There is a museum planned.
Exactly. That's all the big design for. At this point, I didn't find anything to do when I got there. So, but that again.
Picture with a cannon.
That's for the future. I did, that looked like a beautiful rendering of, I wanted somebody to tell me the story of the battle.
Yeah.
And there was somebody there, he was very pleasant. I don't know if he was with the Forest Service or maybe just a volunteer or whatever, but.
They don't have a full-time person.
Right, yes, sir, exactly. I was telling Sarah earlier, one of my, one of your unique, I think it's a little jewel, is Heritage Village. When I walked in there, I thought, this is cool. This is real, I don't, I've not seen this anywhere else. Again, I was a little disappointed that nothing was open, and there was nobody there to tell me about it. There was some kind of school function there, I think it was like International Day or whatever, and, you know, each class would be, one was Japan, one was Italy, whatever. It was kind of cool to see that. But if the, if there was actually docents there or something that would kind of be able to tell you about those different places, I thought it was as cool as it could be.
City of McClainy actually had an employee there for a while, but funding determines everything.
Sure, sure.
It got cut.
Well, and you know, it's one of those things that we all understand too. You know, if in the strategic plan it says something really good and y'all adopt it and says, you know, you need to have somebody there to do that, well, A, where's the funding coming from? But B, it would be one of those chicken and egg things. If you have somebody there to interpret, well, probably nobody's going to come for a while, until they know there's somebody there to interpret it. And then once they do, then of course it all blends together, but it would take a little time. There'd probably be a lot of days that docent would be, you know, trying to find something to do. But what a cool little place. It really was.
There's a few volunteers that will meet you there.
Yes.
You know, show a group around, but you've got to schedule that.
Right, right. Well, I was a little surprised there wasn't a, the buildings themselves had a, I thought did a really good job of talking about the building or talking about individuals in the city or county who might have been involved in that. I would have liked to have had a paper guide to help me walk around. But again, it's just, it's just, you know, looking at a visitor from a visitor's point of view.
We've kind of bounced around on this board about that scan thing, you know, where you scan.
QR code.
What a great idea. And, well, even have it like at the hotels or something where people could.
But you could put a little sign at the entrance to Heritage Park with a QR code that tells you everything about everything in Heritage Park, and it can be updated as needed because the QR code just takes you to.
You could even film a tour of Heritage Park, and that QR code would just link you to a YouTube page where you could watch the video as you walk through the facility.
And I've seen this done in other places. I think it'd work well in Heritage Village. Put that QR code on each individual building, and the story that you hear is from somebody being that person, you know, who's telling that story. It just gives it a whole different feel. It just makes it different. And obviously, the funding would come on the front end to put all that technology together, but you wouldn't have to worry about having docents. I still want to go inside.
They could walk up to each individual store, mash a button, and hear a recording about what that store is, not even have to have a QR code.
If you got really creative, you could actually use it to be interactive so that, you know, if they're talking, if they're in the school and they're talking about, I don't know, something on the board, well, a light comes on on the board that you can see through the window. There's a lot of cool things you can do with technology now, but, you know, I've been in the industry long enough that technology was, you'd put your, you'd put your print ad in Southern Living, and at the end of it, you know, you would say, write us for a visitor's guide using code SL, you know, so we know where it came from. And of course, tourism advertising has completely changed. It's now all feeling and mood and sets the brand and sends you to the website to get the information. That's the exciting part of technology, I think, for our industry. It can really help a lot. As I was driving down here Monday, and then actually a lot yesterday driving around Baker County, I thought, how did people do this before they had their phones? You know?
Oh, yeah.
It's amazing. I mean, I had no trouble finding my.
They'd stop by the Chamber of Commerce and get a map.
Well, exactly. Is the chamber, because I couldn't, I didn't ask for a chamber building. I should have. So maybe I'll sneak by there the same. But do y'all have literature there, maps, that type of thing?
We do, some, not a lot, because of funding.
I understand, sure.
But we do have some maps. Now, my board has told me we're not printing any more maps.
Okay.
So when these are gone, they're gone, and they were printed in 2017.
Oh, really? Okay. And they're printed at your expense, not from?
We, yeah, we sold ads to try to pay for them, but it's just, they're too expensive to do. And there's, too many people would rather use that to do it.
Exactly.
But we do have some literature about some places.
Right, right. And that was my fault for not coming by the chamber all of this. I should have done that.
Well, is that something that this, you know, this board could fund? Some, the QR, the scan QR code thing?
Well, I would think so. The reason we, the reason we don't have a lot of literature is we have what people provide to us. We don't have any money to develop it and print it and have it to give away. And.
Well, I'm talking about tourist development money.
Well, that's right. What tourist promotion has been done historically has been done by the chamber with no funding to do it. Our problem's been our existing plan. 90% of the money for the civic center and, you know, so that's been the problem. You know, we discussed having brochures and putting them at the Welcome Center on 95, you know, when people hit Florida, you know, here's ecotourism.
I did stop at the Welcome Center when I first came in, I couldn't find anything on Baker.
No, there wasn't, there's probably not anything because there's nobody.
In fact, I asked one of the attendants, can you tell, I'm going to McClainy, can you tell me anything about that? And she kind of went, I think it's near Jacksonville, you know.
Well, that was good. I'm surprised. Yeah, so we know there's a gap there that we need to fill, you know, the other part of it. I don't know if you told him what the Regional Planning Council's doing on parks and.
We talked a little bit about what the county has been doing with our water trails and the national park system on our Zoom call the other day. Yes, we did, yeah.
I think there's a lot of opportunity to, and I don't know what your funding is yet. Sarah's going to provide us with all that information about your annual lodging tax collection, which I assume is your funding source, is that correct? Lodging tax collection? And any reserves you may have? And that'll kind of help drive perhaps some of the recommendations that come back to you about how to most effectively and economically utilize some of those funds for tourism promotion, which it was, you know, you can have the, that's why Coca-Cola, everybody drinks Coca-Cola, but you still see a million ads a day for Coca-Cola. Because they want to keep you in front of mind, and that's the whole, you're going to be coming from a little bit behind the curve because you haven't done, haven't had the opportunity to do that in the past. You're going to have to grow that awareness first and then, but I think you've got it, you've got the product. It just has to be, you know. My wife hates it when I do these jobs because I always come back and say, I found where we need to move to. And as I was driving around, oh, this would be a great place to live. And my wife's response always is, fine, you get our sons and their families, including our grandchildren, to move too, and we can do that. So I don't think, I don't think that's going to happen. I believe I'll die in middle Tennessee somewhere, but that'll be fine. Well, it's going to be an interesting, fun project, and I think we want to make sure it's, we want to return. We want to get people here. We want to get, we want to get some dollars flowing in from tourism.
We're excited about it. We had some really good momentum before COVID.
Yes, sir.
And it knocked us, and then we sputtered around for a couple of years, and we decided we needed some expertise to help guide us through it, and we got the county commission to agree, and so that's where we're at today, and we're really excited about it.
That's great. I think that would probably be one of our conversations that we'll have. I need to get the lay of the political land to see what that support level is and.
We got them on board. I think they want to change the plan. They know it's, it needs to change, and so that's why we're here.
I got you. And all tourism development is going to come out of the county, is that correct? It's not going to come out of the city?
Right.
Which is fine, I just.
They collect all the money from the tax, so.
Got you, got you, understand. In Tennessee, you got to be careful because you can have a county tax, a city tax, and that all goes on top of the sales tax. So, and if you're in Nashville, it goes on top of a tourism district fee. So if you rent a room in Nashville, you're going to pay around 23, 24% tax total, total tax on a room night. And if you're going to get a room in downtown Nashville, it's going to start out at $7 a night anyway. Would you like to have that rate?
Well, we're at 3% right now.
Yes, sir.
And there's two additional percent out there that we have talked about trying to, but now it takes a voter referendum in order to.
Really?
Instead of a.
In Florida.
A county commission vote. So that'd be two years down the road, hopefully, but I mean, that's, we have talked a lot about that because the way it's structured, it looks like we would, that would be most of our promotional money. The other stuff we could use if we did some facility stuff or other things, you know.
Correct, yes, sir. That's, that's.
That's a problem.
It's a problem.
Sorry for interrupting. That's probably a good point, is they develop the plan.
Correct.
They need to see what the statute is and how much of our money we can actually use for this or this or this.
Yes, absolutely.
That's right.
Yeah. One of the, one of the things that we'll probably talk about in the plan that we'll talk about together as a group is public education. You know, let's say you're going to try to get a referendum five years down the road. Well, you've got five years to educate the public on, on your citizenry on, number one, this is not your tax, you're not paying it. Number two, this is how it's going to benefit you. When I first got the job in Franklin, I was interviewing for the job, and the chair of the interview committee said, can you count to 13? And I said, well, yes, ma'am, I can. Why? She said, because we have a 24-member commission. And she said, don't ever go in unless you know that at least 13 of those commissioners have enough public behind them to support what you're asking for. So, and we'd get the commission educated on tourism, they're all gung ho, and then you know what would happen?
They'd change.
They'd have an election. So it changes, and you have to educate yet again.
I count 13, but I have to take off one shoe to do it.
There you go. Exactly, exactly. Well, good deal. Well, Sarah has my contact information. In fact, I'll leave you with several of my cards if you want these folks to have that, and feel free to contact me. Or sometimes it's easier to go through a contact person. I think right now that's going to be Sarah. And, but, but you'd be more than willing to call me at any time or email me with your thoughts. And again, I'll be back within a month or two for sure with the stakeholder stuff, so it's going to be good.
Good, John, we're excited.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming.
Excellent. Sarah, I'm just going to leave my business cards back here.
Yeah, please do, just leave them on the table, sure.
And I'm going to go walk to my car because I'm with the courthouse when I get here.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Well, I see any public comments are going to be coming our way. Any board comments?
I'm happy to see that we're starting.
We are. I was so excited about this meeting, it was unbelievable.
Yeah, right.
I can't tell you. I'm ready, you know, the next six months are going to be a lot of fun.
Realize what we have and what we need to do.
I noticed. Yep.
And then we can make it better.
Yes. If y'all keep, keep your wheels turning, keep thinking, in the next month or two, we're going to have our opportunity to tell the man what our individual visions are, and then hopefully he can take that and manipulate it into a good plan for us.
And there are, there's a survey that I would want to distribute to each one of you guys, and then I'm going to take and compile your answers into one master survey from us. So I'll get that out to you guys if y'all could get, thanks, John. Y'all could get that back to me, but I'll share that with you.
Safe travels home.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
But I'll get that to you guys, we'll get it circulated, and it's really exciting for sure. Yes, windy out there. Turn the door open. Yeah, and I'll give you guys John's card before you're out of here.
Flags were screaming out there on the pole when I parked to come in, that wind's getting them. Good. I'm ready. Been on this TDC for a while, so I'm ready to.
Will they be able to help us figure out how to get that other two seen? Is that part of what they, they?
I think your plan, yeah, I think your plan will help you get to that point when you can shut.
Having a plan.
Having a plan will enable us to go after.
Yeah. And we, he has that information, so when he does the budgeting part of it.
Right.
If you're able to pass this 2% and can use that part for promotion and this X amount of dollars, and then you'll have these other dollars you can do this, that and the other thing with, you know, so. Which is what our vision has been, you know, to try to be able to.
Pre-develop it.
Yes. Accomplish some really good things. Yep. I want to get it done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm getting old, that's another part of my legacy I want to leave. I'm in the legacy planning. The older I get, the more I think about it.
Trying to have a leaving a legacy dinner at a TDC, right?
Yep. So anything else for the good of the cause? Thank y'all for coming. We spend a journey.